You're live.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our work session. Today is Monday, February 10th, 2025. It's approximately 1:00 PM. I'm Mayor Enriquez. And we'll start if you all join me in a moment of silence. Couple of things that we want to remember. Thirty-five years ago, we had the tragic incident at our bowling alley that is one of the unsolved mysteries. And we still want to keep the victims and their families in our thoughts. And also tomorrow marks one year since we lost Officer Jonah Hernandez in the line of duty. So if you all join me in a moment of silence for our police department and Jonah's family as well. Have you joined me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One mission under the end of this law will never be adjusted.
We'll get started with our jobs of the week. We'll give Sarah a couple of seconds to come up.
Thank you, Mayor.
We called you right as you walked in.
Right on time today.
Jobs of the week by Sarah Rainey.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm Sarah Rainey, one-stop coordinator, sorry, for America's Job Center, New Mexico. We finally have our new logos. We're going to be changing out a lot of things here in our offices across the region and across New Mexico. But for jobs of the week, we have a, excuse me, I'm losing my voice today. A real-time crime center technician for the city of Las Cruces. That one starts at 2286 an hour and closes on the 3rd. Excuse me. We also have a building service representative for the city. That one starts at 1740 an hour and the applications close June 30th. The initial review of the applications, though, was stated in the posting that it closes 2:24. So other applications will be taken until June. We also have a residential maintenance technician for White Sands Missile Range. That one starts at 28,000 and the posting closes on the 1st of March. There is a auto general service technician for Pep Boys for $29,000 a year. And that one closes on the 8th of March. For Doniana County, animal control officer, that one is $16 to $24 an hour and the posting closes on the 6th. As well as a branch manager for Lind Gas and Equipment, and that posting closes on the 7th. Just a note for our upcoming events, we do have our monthly job readiness event at the Community of Hope. It's where we meet with the members of that community and help them with job readiness for everything from resumes to interviewing. And sometimes we do have employers that come and help interview on the spot off our jobs. So that's been great. If there's any employers that are interested in that, please reach out to me and we can get you in touch with that event. We do have those monthly for March. Just a quick note, we have again a Community of Hope in mid-March. Veterans event in El Paso, Mock It Till You Rocket, which is our juniors and seniors from Las Cruces that come and do interviewing and practice their skills. We will be looking for volunteers to come help interview our kiddos. So if anybody's interested, please reach out to me. We would love, we would love your assistance. And it's a really fun event to get involved with. The next day after the market, we will have our quarterly job fair at the Las Cruces Convention Center. And there's more to come on those as well. And that is all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, sir.
Next, head of the weeks with Carol.
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Nelson, the Digital Content Specialist with the Animal Services Center of the Mesia Valley. A couple of reminders, our dog and cat of the week, whenever they're promoted, are available at no cost all week that they're promoted. And be sure to contact the center to arrange meet and greets for animals that are in a foster home. And we have really good news this week. Both our cat of the week and dog of the week have already been adopted out. So we're super excited about that, especially for Dino, our dog of the week, because he has been with us since July. So super happy for Dino. We did still want to highlight some long-term residents that are still available to adopt. All long-term residents that have been with the center three months and more are available for just $25. Dora has been at our center for unfortunately 397 days. Alice, 250 days. Mabel, 246 days. And Luna, 241 days. So they continue to be our longest-aided animals. We would love to see them get into a home. And we're excited that our big event at the center is going to be this weekend. From 12 to 2, we're going to be having the Cupid Shuffle Speed Dog Dating. And so it's going to be a really fun time to get experience with several different animals at one time. And then if you're not sure you're ready to adopt, there's also the opportunity to participate in our Be Mine Forever sleepover, where you can take the animal home, get a feel for them, and see what you think. As always, you can reach out to our website for more information or find us on social media as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol. Next on the agenda is item 3.1, Review El Paso Electric Company Franchise Agreement.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor Adrian Widmer, Utilities Director. And today we're going to talk about the El Paso Electric Franchise Agreement. Just to give you a little bit of background, years ago, the city of Las Cruces had made a determination to condemn El Paso Electric, and mainly it was up on the West Mesa. And through that, there was the actual condemnation. And then in 2000, per court ordered by the judge, the city and El Paso Electric had to sit down and have negotiations, of which they did. That settlement agreement was through Resolution 238 approving the settlement agreement between the city of Las Cruces and El Paso Electric Company, where El Paso Electric paid the city of Las Cruces 21 million to take back over the West Mesa electrical systems, which included their substation and all other equipment. Also, in 2000, the city adopted ordinance 1790. And what that was, as part of the agreement, was to have this ordinance. And so it was for seven years with a two-year automatic extension. And that expired in 2009. So the city's been going back and forth with El Paso Electric since then. And recently, we've been able to come together and come to a solution. The participants included Public Works and David Sadio is here for Public Works. Finance, utilities, which included me. City Legal. And here today, we've got Henry Becker, in case you have legal questions. City Administration, and of course, El Paso Electric Representatives, specifically Rico Gonzalez. And he's here as well, in case you all have some questions. So this franchise agreement is pretty much a typical franchise agreement that has some specifics in there. And things that would be included, that's kind of a specific, would be that this particular franchise agreement is for 20 years. And it'll be reviewed every 10 years. Along with that, if for some reason we think it needs to be reviewed or other issues, or if even El Paso Electric has issues and wants to visit again, we can certainly do that with a 10-day notice that's in writing. In addition with that, there is an increase on this, which includes, it's a 1% increase from 2% to 3%, and it's a pass-through, just so that you know, that's an increase. So for fiscal year '23, El Paso Electric collected and sent over almost $1.8 million to the city of Las Cruces' general fund. And the estimated 1% increase will be an additional almost $900,000. Of course, that's approximate, because it depends on how much electricity people and commercial actually uses. So the next steps on that essentially is there will be a first read at a regular city council meeting. If you all agree to move forward, then there's the second read, which would be a meeting to adopt through the second read. And do you have any questions?
Counselor Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Adrian, Ms. Widmer. What are the, so the franchise, the benefits the city gets is the money? I mean, and what are the terms of the, what are the terms of the franchise?
So it's pretty much a typical franchise. That includes like the grant of authority that El Paso Electric can be here and actually provide electric service. So that they have overhead, underground, they've got the substations and so forth. There are things where the city and the company are going to comply with all present and future laws. There's a lot of information in there. There's requirements of record drawings. And to get those to us in a timely manner. And then that any kind of installation work is going to be done in intelligence. We have indemnification for each other. El Paso Electric is going to furnish service under rules and regulations. They're going to go out like they do now. If there's trees in the way of their lines, they're going to trim them. And just the typical franchise agreement. So we're here in your city's right-of-way, and we're providing service, and we're going to give you X amount of money.
Okay, so you said that one of the terms is indemnification for both parties. And then what does that cover? Is it specific? I mean, if there's malfeasance on any part or?
So it's subject to applicable laws and regulations of the state of New Mexico or the customer rules of service. And the company shall indemnify and hold harmless the city, its governing body, officers, agents, and employees from and against any and all claims or obligation caused by acts of negligence of the company, its officers, agents, or employees, contractors, or subcontractors in connection with the installation, repair, operation, or maintenance of any of the company's facilities, or any work done as authorized or required by this franchise. The city shall give prompt notice to the company of any claim or suit arising under this franchise. And the company and/or its issuer shall have the option to compromise and defend the same to the extent of their own interest. Nothing in this section shall be construed to depart from the present or future law of New Mexico concerning contribution among or between joint tort feezers.
Well, joint tort feezers insofar as a lawsuit coming from a third party?
So to be honest with you, I have no idea what tort feezers means, but I'm thinking that
Those are wrongdoings.
Perhaps, Henry does.
Yeah, those are wrongdoings.
Counselor Flores, tort feezer is the individual found responsible for harm against another individual. In this case, I believe the indemnification language refers to multiple people who are, their actions are jointly affecting the El Paso line, El Paso Electric line. And so I had my own question about that provision, but we will get back to you about that, what the meaning of that might mean as far as that indemnification provision is concerned. Generally speaking, this indemnification provision is to make sure that El Paso Electric indemnifies the city against claims against the city. So El Paso Electric, if any claims were successful, would be paying for those.
But then that brings El Paso Electric to defend that.
Correct.
So then it just turns into a lot of litigation.
I'm sorry?
It turns into a lot of litigation.
As it commonly does, your counselor, there will be litigation sooner or later. Someone will bring claims.
Thank you so much for the explanation. So in your reading of this, does it in any way bind the city? I mean, it's what, till many years from now, right? Another 20 years from now, I think?
Twenty years after it is fully executed between the mayor and El Paso Electric.
Yeah. So that agreement, that indemnification agreement can be relied upon if there's a lawsuit against a city, against El Paso Electric? And that party suing would be whoever? I'm just trying to understand exactly what the benefits are of being indemnified. I mean, you know, it seems like if someone is a wrongdoer, but they're indemnified, how do you get any relief?
I will pass that question on to, on to Henry, please.
Counselor Flores, the indemnification provision is a standard one for cities municipalities. So what it does is if there's a claim against the city, say, I'm just making it up, someone hits a power line or something like that, loses power, and there are damages associated. An individual can sue the city. I don't mean they might have a good reason to, but they may, for some reason. And that this indemnification provision allows the city to rely on El Paso Electric to pay any damages that are actually established in a judgment. It's entirely hypothetical, but yes, we can rely on this indemnification provision for that reason.
Okay. And then what is the benefit to El Paso Electric? I mean, that's our benefit, the city's benefit, to be indemnified. What's there? Rico can?
So I will pass it on to Rico Gonzalez. Thank you.
Mayor, counsel, Rico Gonzalez with El Paso Electric. Mayor and Counselor Flores, your question is specific to the indemnification. What's the benefit for us to have that in there? Or the benefit overall for having a franchise agreement with the city?
Well, I guess it encompasses both, Mr. Gonzalez. But the indemnification part, is it automatic? Is it just as our counselor noted, our legal counselor noted, if there's an accident and, you know, electrical line goes down or something, then the city is indemnified from being sued by the tort feezer or whatever? And then El Paso Electric would be totally responsible for defending against it or what?
Mayor Enriquez, counsel, Mayor Enriquez, and Counselor Flores. I don't know if I'll go into like specifics of whether someone is sued, if they have the right to sue the city or El Paso Electric. What I will say is that in looking at other franchises, indemnification for the municipality who is signing on to the franchise has always been part of franchises that I have seen. I think from a more specific perspective of indemnification and the value of that to El Paso Electric, if it pleases the council, I'm happy to bring in our counsel to talk about that a little bit more from a historical perspective and maybe a legal perspective. But there's always been in any franchise, and I've now worked on Mesias, Anthony's, Sunland Parks, a few of the counties that we serve. This indemnification language is part of having the franchise agreement.
And are there any terms in that agreement that would allow? Well, there'd have to be litigation if there were any questions as to whether there should be or not be any indemnification, right? Or is it, does it just go to an arbitrator?
Mayor and counsel, I don't know the answer to that question. So I'll have to get that, I'll have to get that to you, but I'll get it to you as soon as this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And then Mayor and Counselor Flores, to the benefit of the franchise for El Paso Electric. So we serve this territory. It's a territory that the state has provided to us. And the franchise provides for our trucks to be able to be in the roadways of the city to be able to provide service to your constituents and our customers for the extended period of time. And it also gives our crews and leadership the ability to have something written down that says, this is the way that we're going to be doing our work. So we're not necessarily needing to go through permitting for every single piece of work that we do. It also allows us to be in emergencies in roadways in case something, you know, happens with the lines or the like. So from our perspective, it's a very valuable tool to getting the work done that we need to do in the long-term piece. And to that end, that's where we agree to collect the franchise agreement funds and get them over to the city and as a piece of ensuring that it's compensated from one way or another, being in the roadways and alleyways and the like of the city.
So it sounds like it's a one-way benefit for the city? Or is there a benefit to EPE?
Yeah, no, all of that is the benefit that we see as
To avoid litigation?
Not necessarily avoid litigation, but to be able to use your roadways and your alleyways to repair and improve the lines that we have for our customers. So we get that opportunity to be there with the agreements that are inside these pages and
Okay, so that's pretty much the benefit you get out of this agreement?
Yeah.
I see. Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Barotin.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks so much, Adrian. And both of you, Rico. Just a quick question on the, Adrian, the agreement is for 20 years. And that's normal, that's a standard franchise agreement, that's timeline?
Mayor and Counselor Ben Como, different franchises can have different years. And so previously, we've even seen them where there are 10, 15 years. And so on this one, we negotiated back and forth, and we said, okay, so if we do it for 20, then we'll review it in 10 years. If something else comes up, then we will circle around and get back together and have a discussion again. There's nothing that stops us from having additional discussions. But I think it gives a longer-term comfort level to both the city and to El Paso Electric, that we know what each of us is supposed to be doing for 20 years with a 10-year review to find out, is that working or is there something that we need to make changes to?
Thanks for clarifying that, Adrian.
You're welcome.
Just thank you to the parties that came together to, you know, make these negotiations. I will not pretend to know more than any of you. So I appreciate that work. And then just lastly, I think this isn't for today's meeting, but in the future, I would love to discuss, you know, how to best invest the fees coming in, rather than just going into the general fund? Or how, again, how we can best invest these back into our community? And I know that that can happen at a future time. But that was really the only clarifying question I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Mateo.
Mayor, I promise I have a minor question. On streetlights, maybe someone can answer this, either David or Rico or Adrian. Sometimes I get that the lights are city. And sometimes I get the lights are, it could be El Paso, the streetlights. And I have some lights out on Mesa and Hagerty. And since I have all three of you here, maybe we can get those repaired and turned on. So there's my request. And then on And then on the investment idea that Mayor Protem had, it would be nice to have some type of dedicated fund, so that when people feel that there's not enough lighting in their street, we could actually tap a fund that we could get those streetlights up and installed, you know, quicker than going through a lengthy process. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Adrian, a quick question. Is there a deadline when this is to be signed off or issued?
Mr. Mayor, no, not necessarily. But like anything else, the sooner the better. So I know that El Paso Electric has been asking, when are we taking it? When are we taking it? And so we got the okay to bring it forward. And so it's completely up to you all. So we can schedule the first read whenever you'd like. And then I do believe that the city manager was hoping that we would have further discussions when it comes to what you all want to invest that money into.
Okay, then I'd like to ask Mr. Rico Gonzalez.
Rico Gonzalez with El Paso Electric, just for the record.
Thank you. Just for El Paso Electric's timeframe, what kind of date are you looking at?
I think as soon as we could do it, it would be fantastic. We've been going on an implied franchise. And so it takes, I believe it's 30 days in this franchise that we would need to, once it's passed, to be able to implement the 3%. And that mostly takes into our billing system and getting that into the billing and get that cycled in. And so, yeah, it would be, we would be willing to see rules amended and you guys go into full council and do it right now? No, I'm kidding.
Yeah, we'd all like to see that.
Yeah, that's just an idea.
The other thing is, looking at a 20-year term, I think long-term would be good. Would El Paso Electric or anyone be opposed if we reviewed every seven years as opposed to 10 years? I think a lot of impact fees are viewed that way as well. So it would be an opportunity to maybe review it every seven years.
Mayor and Counsel, I won't sit here and negotiate right now, but I don't think that would be, you know, a big issue. But I'll take that back to our general council and ask them. And if that's a change, I think that's an easy change to make in the document, per se.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks. Mayor Protem?
Thanks, Mayor. I just have one more quick question. So just clarifying question, since 2009, we've been operating under a 2% franchise fee then? That's the...
Mayor and Counsel, under an implied franchise, so it ended in 2009, but the statute allows us to continue with that as long as everyone's okay with what it is. So yes, we've been at 2% on the bill. So you can see it on your bills. It says City of Los Cruces franchise fee and it sits right there.
Okay, interesting. And then that's actually going to be my next question. The pass-through really is ultimately this 1% increase, the customer will end up seeing the impact of that?
That's right. That's right. It's a pass-through. I think we pay it quarterly. Okay. We pay it quarterly, so it comes in, we put it into an account, we send it over. It's never part of any of our rate-making. It's never part of a rate case. It's just a straight...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then is there any particular reason why we hadn't brought this up before, since we've been operating under this implied franchise agreement for this long?
I think, Mayor and Counsel Ben Como, I think we've just been having negotiations, going back and forth and a little bit of change in city manager and change at El Paso Electric. And, you know, things happen and so it comes on, it falls off. But I think we've got the efforts of all aligned to be here today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I think that's good. Thank you for the presentation and the information. That's the only item we had on the agenda for today, so.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second, Graham.
This is on the motion to adjourn the work session. Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Carron is absent. Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Como?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Yeah, we'll have the agenda-setting meeting for February 18th in a couple of minutes.